All right. Well, thanks, folks, for joining. This is the USTA League Virtual Town Hall Meeting. My name is Michael Hughes. I'm with the USTA National Office and work in the USTA League Department. We're very glad to have everybody here today to talk a little bit about what's going on in the USTA League Program and focus primarily this afternoon on the NTRP and questions that folks have around the NTRP. You'll notice on Zoom here, I'm joined today by several colleagues, both folks from the national staff and also from our National League Committee. I did want to turn it over to John Needfeld-Thomas, who's the Chair of our Adult League Committee, to kick us off with a few words as well. John?
Thanks, Michael. Really glad to be with everybody and just give you a sense of the big picture of the League Committee. So there are 15 national volunteers, and we work closely to advise, assist, and collaborate with the national staff that Michael talked about, as well as other folks in the tennis industry. And we're all about providing and promoting recreational and competitive league team opportunities for players that are 18 and over. And just a couple ways we do this, we've got some subcommittees that really make our work happen. So championships, as you know, the chance to advance to a national championship really sets our league program apart from other competitive and recreational tennis programs. And so they make sure these championships are excellent. We recognize a National League Volunteer of the Year Award through an awards committee. Regulations, I've served as Chair for a number of years, and Diana Anse has capably taken that over now. But we work to, we are recreational tennis, but we're competitive as well. So we want to make sure we have clear and consistent rules and regulations, but also give as much autonomy to local areas as possible because that's where the vast majority of the play happens. And then our Player Experience Subcommittee, and that's part of the group you'll hear a lot from today, really designed to grow entry-level tennis, retain all the great players and captains that we have had over the years. And so they do that through a number of means, including a survey that many of you filled out that resulted in some of these NTRP questions today. So appreciate all of you being here and consider volunteering to support the programs as well, too, at your local level. That's how most of us that ended up on this National Committee got where we are with that starting point. So, thanks.
Yeah, thank you, John. And I think we're gonna actually just start off with just a couple of updates from the USTA League program standpoint, and then I'll introduce a colleague of mine, Heather Hawks, to talk a little bit more about ratings. So if you can advance the slide, just one more. So what's new? We wanted to talk about two newer things that are in the USTA League Program that we want to make sure our players and captains and providers are all aware of. The first of which, if you'll pop to the next slide, you'll notice if you're a captain or if you're a player, that there has been a new way in which players can register for the USTA League Program. We've created, at the back end of 2020, we created two new team types. So right now, you can set up your teams as closed, which means this is the standard way that we've all been registering for the USTA League Program for years and years. You have a captain, your captain gives you a team number, and you go on to Tennis Link. You use your team number to register for that team. But we've added two additional team types. The other is closed but seeking players. This just means that as a captain, you can have your team be closed, but then you can have prospective players reach out to you via an automated email to see if there's an opportunity to play on your team. So if you're a captain and you're a little bit more discerning on who you'd like to add to your team, but you know you need some more members, this is really the option for you. And then the third option is you can set your team now to be open, which means that players can find your team, and if they're the right, they're at the right level and you know the right gender, they can register directly onto your team. So the reason that we did this is this came off the back end of the last two years of player surveys. You'll notice every year at the end of the USTA League season, we send a survey out to all of our players, asking for your input on what we can do to make your lives easier as captains, what we can do to make the program better. And really, the last two years, now we've heard from our captains is facilitate some ways to help us find new players to get onto our teams. And that's exactly what we've done with this enhancement here. So we hope that this is gonna help you guys find more players for your teams. Or if you're one of those players that really wants to play on, you know, three, four, five, six league teams, this should be your perfect opportunity to find more league teams for you. I wanted to also turn it over to Liz Marietta, who is our National League Administrator and our manager of national championships, to talk about another great update for USTA League this season.
Great, thanks, Michael. So I just wanted to let you guys know, if you haven't heard yet. Oh, Alicia, you can go to the next slide, please. Our Refer a Friend program is back. We piloted this a couple of years ago, and it was just geared towards our 18 to 39 age group, and it was a huge success. So we have brought it back, and now it is open to anybody and everybody, as long as the person that's being referred is brand-new to us, so they've never played with us before, or they're a lapsed player who has not registered and played on a team in 2018, 19, 20, or 21. And built into Tennis Link, when they register, is a little spot for them to put the person who referred them, their name and their email address, and then that person gets a lovely $25 gift card. There's no limit to how many people you can refer, as long as they meet that criteria. We'll send you 15 gift cards if you refer 15 people. So it started June 1st, and we are retroing back to that. So even if you referred somebody on the first, and you didn't know about this, but they put your name, and they made the criteria, you'll still get a gift card, and it will go through December 31st or until supplies last. So definitely a great opportunity between our new reg flow of kind of finding some new places for folks to play. But also, if you have some who are on the fence, you say, hey, come register for this team. You help me out. I get $25. You get to come play league tennis, and it's a win-win all around. If you guys want any more information, you can go to usta.com/ReferAFriend. Has all the information and all the official rules. All right, that's it for me. I think back to you, Michael.
Thanks, Liz. Yeah, this is another exciting initiative where we want to try to bring the next crop of league players into the game to enjoy what everybody on this call has enjoyed for years. So without further ado, if you can pop to the next slide, let's get into the exciting part of the agenda today. I want to introduce my colleague, Heather Hawks. Heather has been with USTA through working on, with Tennis Link and with ratings for longer than I can even put my finger on, but she's the one guiding us on our NTRP. And I just want to welcome Heather to our Town Hall to talk to you guys about NTRP and how it works. So Heather, floor is yours.
Awesome. Thank you, Michael. Good afternoon, good evening, everybody. I'm really looking forward to this player education session today. I know we have it set up so that you can submit questions in the chat. Couple of things, if you could make sure your questions are relevant for a group forum, that would be great. We'll give you an email address at the end if you have a personal question. And also want to make sure that maybe you jot your questions down as we go and submit them as we get near the end of the presentation, because I'm gonna cover a ton of material. And based on a lot of the questions I've seen come through and some of the questions that were submitted with the registration, those will be answered today. So really looking forward to getting through this. I am gonna move quickly because there's a lot of material. So bear with me while I go quick and looking forward to getting this information out there. Alicia, can you advance the slide? So what the NTRP does, it uses your USTA play history and your current match results to generate player dynamic and year-end ratings. It effectively assigns player levels after only a few matches. That's something that's very unique about NTRP is that it's specially architected to use that information in just a few match results to get a player at their general level. Other tennis rating systems work a little bit differently. So that's something really special about NTRP. And the other thing it does is become more accurate with more match results. That's any math algorithm, the more data it has to work on, the better job it can do in finding the right placement for a player. Go ahead, Alicia. What it does not do, so the results from doing these education sessions, I've heard a lot of questions over the years, so I always modify these slides to reflect some of the things that I've heard. One of the questions I get a lot is why doesn't the NTRP throw out tanked matches? That's matches where players either cheated, sandbagged, lost on purpose, fill in the term that you use. The reason we don't throw out those matches is because we don't know which ones they are. There is no mathematical definition of a tanked match. If we tried to create a mathematical definition, we would invariably throw out good matches, and we certainly don't want to do that. It is a work in progress. We are always analyzing the data. We're always looking at match results to look for patterns that would enable us to perhaps handle mathematically-defined tanked matches differently. There's just not enough consistency in the definition mathematically of a tanked match. So that's why those are not thrown out today. The other thing the NTRP does not do is change dramatically. It's because this would certainly impact our team structure, but also adult levels don't change that dramatically. What we found in trends over time, regardless of age, is that once an adult player is playing tennis, their level is pretty well stabilized for longer periods of time. Whereas with youth, we see a lot more volatility for ups and downs in their ratings. So that's why the ratings are published once a year. Also, keeping in mind, the NTRP was designed specifically to support the USTA League Program. So the goal is to get players in a general level of accuracy for a season of play. So we don't need the dramatic changes on a regular basis because we're really looking at it for a longer-term application and general level-based play. The other thing it doesn't do is publish more than once a year. Part of the reason for this is that this would be disruptive for team structure. If we think about this, if our ratings were being published mid-season, how would we handle that? So it would also change the focus of the role of the rating in the leagues. The role of the ratings is to really help players find their level of play again for a season or for a year. And if we were publishing ratings on a regular cadence, that could distract from that a little bit. And it would also be hard to manage some of those changes with our policy and procedures and how we handle things. If a player were to be up out of level, you can imagine that would cause a lot of distraction, as well as a player that may drop below level, when in reality, we just want to keep the team together and keep them playing through the season. Thank you, Alicia, if you want to advance the slide. How does it work? So for those of you who want to know how the algorithm works, here is the slide where I tell you absolutely everything that I am allowed to tell you without going behind the veil of our proprietary algorithm information. I'm gonna go as deep as I can, and I hope this helps. The algorithm looks at a few pieces of data. It looks at the ratings of players before a match takes place. So who's on the court? What were their ratings going into the match? And then the algorithm predicts an outcome. What does it think is going to happen in that match? Then it analyzes the actual outcome of the match, which scores were inputted for those players for that match, and it adjusts the ratings accordingly. It takes four matches for a new player, four matches against an established player. That means a player with a rating, for a new player to start to generate dynamics. So the reason for that is because, as you can see in those first four bullet points, the algorithm uses relativity. It bases your rating on who you play. And if you're a brand-new player, we just don't know enough about you to use you as an established player against which other players may generate ratings. So after four of those dynamics, though, we do know a little bit more about you when we can start to use your rating as an established player against other ratings, against other players, sorry. And for year-end, as long as you've played three matches in included play, you will generate a year-end rating. So you don't have to have generated dynamics during the year. If you have played three matches in included play, you will receive a year-end rating. I realize that might be a little bit confusing, so I'm gonna go a little bit deeper here for just a moment. The dynamics are ratings that are generated on a daily basis. Every night, the calculation pulls in all the results that were entered into Tennis Link on a given day. The dynamic rating algorithm turns through those results and assigns a dynamic rating to every player that had participation. The year-end rating is the rating that takes place once a year after national championships are complete. And it doesn't just look at the play that was taking place on that day. That year-end algorithm looks at a variety of things, play history, including the dynamics, other activities. So the year-end algorithm is slightly different from the dynamic. The dynamic is designed to be a daily snapshot of where a player is performing, and it's specifically designed to help us ensure that players are playing in level. I'm gonna move into a conversation about DQs in just a few minutes, but that's what we use those dynamic ratings for. So again, daily snapshot, are they at the right level? And again, only producing dynamics when playing against what we call an established player. If you're playing against a brand-new self-rated player, you may not generate a dynamic because they don't have a dynamic that tells us what level they are just yet. And that's really to make sure the integrity of the ratings is where it needs to be. Some people have asked if that's a punishment, and it has absolutely nothing to do with punishment. It's about the integrity of the ratings and the integrity of the calculation. And then again, for that year-end rating, that calculation, we run once a year after national championships, three matches in included play, and you will generate a year-end rating. Play history is included. I get this question a lot. So your previous history in USTA carries forward year-over-year in the algorithm in certain ways, and that is factored into your rating. It also does look at your partner rating and their status. So if you're a doubles player and you're playing with a brand-new player that's self-rated, that could impact when you're earning dynamics. But it does also look at your partner rating as it calculates doubles. That is as much as I can tell you about how the doubles rating algorithm calculates. I get those questions a lot, but I do want to make sure that people understand it is aware that you are playing with a partner that has a particular level or that is self-rated when it's calculating your, when it's calculating your rating. It does have weighting, so that's a question we get about, does it use weighting to figure different types of results differently? Yes, it does. That's also all I can tell you there. And start rates, the reason I talk about start rates is because we hear this question when players are self-rated. And I actually saw some of these come through with the registrations. If I'm self-rated as a 3-0, for example, what is my start rate? Well, how is the system treating me? Do they treat me like a 2.51? Do they treat me like a 3-0? Actually, the system treats you like a zero. It doesn't know anything about you. So we don't use any number to assign to you as a start-rated player. That number, that self-rating value is only used to determine your eligibility for registration. And from there on out, it's solely up to you and your performance on the court that determines your rating. Included results, there are some myths here around what gets included in a player's rating. It is section-specific. So generally speaking, your adult play, so adult 40 and over, 18 and over, 55 and over are included in your rating for most sections. Other things like tri-level combo, those do depend on your section. So if you're not sure if you're participating in a league that may or may not be included, please ask your section office. Also, NTRP tournaments, we are moving in a direction where these will be included, no matter what. For 2021, a couple of sections may still be opting out for technical reasons. Ask your section if you are not sure. Mixed results are included only in mixed-exclusive ratings. What that means is if a player participates in only mixed play, that's mixed leagues and mixed tournament activity, they will receive an M rating, and that is the algorithm that uses all of their mixed play. If a player plays in addition to mixed play, they will receive a C rating. So those are completely separate data sets, they're separate algorithms, and they are handled separately. They are not mixed together to calculate a rating. Expirations, so players under 60 years of age expire after three years of no activity. Players over 60 years of age or self-rated players with no activity will expire after two years. Moving up and down with partners, I do get this question a lot, we're partners, why didn't we both move up? Or why didn't we both move down? That goes into everything else that I just talked about, about how it works. The algorithm knows that you have different play, you may have had a different start rate, a different play history. You may have matches that you didn't play together, or maybe one of you also played singles or in a different league. All of that is factored in, and the algorithm calculates everyone as an individual. It doesn't calculate team players as a partner's team. So that's why you may move up and down separately. It does not include, so over here in the light blue, your win-loss record. We get this question a lot. It does not look at your win-loss record. It only uses relativity and prediction to determine a player's rating. It does not credit you for playing up. You must perform at higher levels of play in order for the algorithm to give you a higher dynamic and generate a higher year-end rating. So you can play up, but if you're not performing at a higher level, it will not change your rating. It also, intentional loss does not help the way we think it does. So playing down or losing on purpose, not only does this affect the league, it affects your opponents, and it affects the quality of play of anyone who interacts with you. So it's really important, too, if you feel you're not at the right level or you want to keep that rating down, that you talk to a coordinator about it rather than trying to manage your rating by losing on the court, as this has huge impact on other players in the league program. Thank you, Alicia. Can you advance the slide? Here, we're gonna move on to DQs and appeals. What is a dynamic disqualification? It is when a player has three matches that we refer to as strikes that indicate that the player is what we refer to as clearly above level. Want to say this in another way, this is not sort of out of level or kind of out of level. The clearly above markers are indicators that a player is well beyond their level of play based on their dynamics. Why do we have them? Well, as John said so nicely at the beginning, we are a competitive recreational program. Little bit of seeming paradox in there, but those of us who play USTA leagues play because we like the good level-based play. Those DQs help players stay at the correct level. How does someone get DQed? They generate three strikes. This is 100% computer-determined by the algorithm, and it is 100% objective process. No one can report someone that should be DQed. No one can request to have a player DQed. There is absolutely nothing about this process that is done outside of the algorithm. A player shows up on a report, they have three computer-generated strikes, they are DQed. It's a very black-and-white process. Self-rated and appealed players can be DQed, computer-rated players cannot. What happens when a player is DQed? Also section-based. So if you're not sure if your matches get reversed or which matches get reversed, reach out to your section, and they'll be able to help you understand what happens if a player gets DQed. Now we'll move on to appeals. There are a few different types of appeals. There are self-rate appeals. If you complete the self-rate form and you feel you are not at the right level, there is a link that you can click to see if the system will allow you to appeal, or you may need to submit a form with more information that will allow your section to help evaluate whether or not you should be playing at a different level. There are automatic appeals. Many of you may have seen that link in Tennis Link when logged in and clicked it to see if you were eligible for an up-down appeal. This is based on a table of information that looks at things like your age, how many matches you've played, and what your rating is in hundreds. And the system automatically decides if you're eligible for appeal or not. There is also medical appeals. These are for people with long-term and largely impactful medical conditions. These are, we take these very seriously. There's a lot of documentation required because we want to make sure we're, again, ensuring the integrity of due process here around the medical activity. And then manual appeals, if there's something truly extenuating about your circumstances or something truly wrong with results that have been entered, maybe there's a situation where scores aren't right or something just doesn't seem right, your section can submit an appeal on your behalf. Those are very rare, but we will take a look at them if there's an inquiry where there's a question about what happened in the system. We also have appeals for players that are 70 and over. If you are within a particular range, you now have access to an appeal. That's a new rule, in addition to the 60 and 65, which many of you may be familiar with. And then the 80 and over rule change is also new. If you're over 80 years old and you haven't had an appeal in the last three years, and you believe you're at the wrong level, you are eligible to appeal. I think that's it for this slide. Go ahead, Alicia. Want to remind folks, when we think about compatible, competitive, and leveling up, this is something we hear about a lot, is, you know, shouldn't all of my matches be competitive? Because we are all the same level. And just a little bit of an illustration here, that a level 3.5 could be anywhere from a 3.01 to a 3.50. So quite obviously, a 3.01 and a 3.50 are not necessarily within a competitive level. They are compatible, they should play together, but we can predict probably the 3.5, the 3.50 is gonna win, and the 3.01 may struggle a little bit more in that match, and that's the nature of the program. There's no way to guarantee that every match would be competitive. We do get the question about, why don't you run tighter leagues? So you can see on here, the 3.01 and the 3.25, why don't you shrink the bands? And the reason that most sections of the country don't shrink the bands has to do with a lot of things having to do with infrastructure. We don't have the courts. We don't have the time. We don't have enough players to really build out the leagues. And we'd certainly have to double our national championship efforts if we did that. And you can imagine the lift that that would be. This is really the structure that has served the league program thus far, and it continues to serve it very well. So I just want to remind everybody that if you feel like you had a really tough match or maybe a little bit of an easier match, it wasn't because someone was out of level. It was because you're within different parts of the band. And where you see that competitive match is where we get within those tighter bands. So for example, that 3.25 to the 3.50. And then leveling up, this is just a reminder that if you do change levels and you're used to winning a lot, and you move up to the next level and you're not winning as much, it doesn't mean you're at the wrong level. It means that you're at a more challenging level of play, and you'll expect to lose more than you were at the previous level. All right, Alicia? Captain's question, Jim, do you want to take this slide?
Sorry, had to unmute. Yep. So John introduced me. I'm Jim Meralt. I'm the Chair of the Player Experience Subcommittee. We worked with the staff to come up with this Town Hall format. We hope it's informative and useful. We hope it's the first of many. At this time, I want to introduce Greg Garrity. I've had the good fortune of playing on some of the countless teams that Greg has captained in the Northern Section over roughly 20 years. And he's got a question for you, Heather. Greg?
Yeah, hi, thanks. As Jim stated, you know, USTA captain in Northern Section. It's been closer to 30 years, Jim. Let's get it right.
I'm flies.
Yeah, well, some of that was in the Southwest section, to be fair. But yeah, really, Heather, my question is, you know, I have players come up to me and ask me, you know, more, they want to get more information about their current ratings. And I constantly hear them say, well, I'd like to see more transparency. Go to another decimal point, for example, in your rating. That way, they can see if they're moving up or moving down, or they just have more interaction with their own personal rating. And it's just a little more transparent, I think, for them. They, I think, would appreciate that, especially when they compare to other tennis rating programs like tennisrecord.com and UTR and things like that. So I mean, are there any plans to, I guess, publish the players' ratings to one more decimal point or anything like that?
Yeah, what a great question, and I certainly hear this a lot as well. Thank you, Greg. You know, we do talk about it a lot. We do talk about what are the best ways to give players transparency. One of the things that those of us have seen when we've been around the league program for a long time is a tendency towards overemphasis on the ratings. And what that can mean for some players is, as I addressed earlier, maybe attempting to manage your rating by knowing what your rating is in tens or hundreds. You can intentionally, you know, try to keep your rating down, which we would like to believe is a majority. It's very unfortunate when it happens. That's part of it. Or also managing to avoid a DQ when a player does really belong at a different level. That would also be a challenge. But the other thing that comes up for me a lot, and I've seen this around ratings culture across all ratings, all rating systems, it's not unique to NTRP. It happens in all the tennis rating systems, is if there's an overemphasis on the actual number, the actual rating, you can see a degradation in the program itself. So the, too much focus on the rating, people start to kind of, can start to really think about things like, what's my, what should my lineup be, or who should be playing against that person? Or did I get better today? Or did I get worse today? Or why did that rating go down when I won? And rather than focusing on the experience of the team, the experience of the player, rather than being a captain that's in tune with the skills of the team and really thinking through how to build those lineups, the emphasis moves away from the heart of what we want to be at the center of the league program, which is that team energy, that team working together, and that on-court experience. And it tends to lead towards the rating. So that isn't to say that's a hard no. What that is to say is we are always looking at what are ways we can engage players with more information? And how can we do it in a way that's meaningful to them, engaging to them, informative, feels more transparent, and doesn't serve some of those side effects that we're looking to kind of mitigate? So it is complicated, and it's something we're just, we're really thinking outside of the box on. And as folks continue to bring these suggestions to us, quarterly ratings, ratings in tens, daily in hundreds, all of it, we include all of that in our conversations, and we're really looking at all those options. So really appreciate the question, and just know, we're really trying to figure out what some of those good options might be digitally speaking. Next slide, Alicia.
Thanks. Hey, before you move forward, I would like you to address one question that we got here. If it takes, if it takes four... If it takes, if it takes four matches to start dynamics, how can a new self-rated player get a strike on their second match ever played in USTA League? So if you might just expand a little bit more about how the strikes?
Yes, yeah, good. And sorry, we're on the wrong side for this, but that's okay. We'll work through it. Okay, so if you're a brand-new player, you can get a dynamic rating by playing against a player that is established. But that player that is established will not get a dynamic for playing against you. So in that scenario, new player, established player, new player gets a rating, ergo can receive a strike. Established player does not receive a rating because they're playing against a new player. So I apologize if that was unclear in how I said that. What I meant to intend around the four matches is that after four matches, after four dynamics of being a new player, you now roll into that established player category, and players playing against you can also receive a dynamic. So I hope that clears that up a little bit. Sorry for that.
I think we're taking a pause here very quickly. We always love to give prizes at the, in USTA League. And we have three players who registered who will be, I'll be emailing tomorrow. They've won $25 gift cards. And that's Ann Radke from Holland, Michigan, Joseph Garcia from Seattle, Washington, and Charlene Salas from Venetia, Pennsylvania. Awesome. Thank you. Back to Heather.
Awesome. Thank you, Marilyn, and congratulations on your, on your gift cards, guys. I'm so glad everybody's here today, too, by the way. I love these education sessions. One of the other things we wanted to talk about, you know, Greg, you brought it up. We hear certainly a lot about it, is the other rating systems. There are, they're out there. For many years, really, NTRP was the one we heard about the most. And now the ratings landscape is changing, I would say dramatically. In the last three years, it went from being kind of an afterthought to being front and center of many tennis conversations around the world. So why is that important for us in the league program? Well, we see a lot of players referring to, it used to be TLS. Some players still go there. And we also see a lot of players referring to Tennis Record because they do provide a daily rating in hundreds, which looks in structure like the NTRP ratings. So there's a little bit of this illusion that if you go to Tennis Record, you can see your NTRP rating in hundreds. Really important to know that USTA is not affiliated with Tennis Record. They don't have our correct algorithm. They don't incorporate the correct results. And some of the information that they give out in their Q and A is incorrect, and their ratings are often incorrect. So anywhere from 40% to 60% of the time, they're out of level for a player. So not even are they not close, that they're, they can be out of level entirely for a player in their estimates of their NTRP. So while it's tempting and it can be satisfying to see that rating in hundreds, they are not reliable, and we don't recommend referring to them for anything. And the same with TLS. They are scraping data from the site to get match results. They don't have the algorithm. They don't have the rules. And they don't even have, they don't have player profile information. So you can get duplicates or mixed-up results. Whereas in Tennis Link, obviously, we have all that intact. So just a recommendation to stay away from those sites. We, you know, or look at them and take them for what they are, but they're not affiliated with USTA. We didn't share contact information with them. For those of you that get emails, they came about that information on their own. So again, do what you will, but don't take it to the bank. And you know, sometimes we get it submitted with appeals. Yeah, but my tennis record rating is this. We won't review that appeal based on that information. So important to keep it separate from anything USTA. Universal Tennis, as many of you have heard, Universal Tennis Rating is a tennis system, tennis technology system that runs events and offers ratings. They are in a very different segment than USTA. As I've mentioned before, NTRP was really specifically designed to support the Adult League Program. It works well for our adult tournaments. It's a very USTA program-specific algorithm and rating program. Universal Tennis found its roots in college tennis. And so the UTR algorithm is a very precise algorithm. It's designed for a different constituency, high-performance juniors and collegiate. It's been fine-tuned for that over the past 10-plus years, and it does extraordinarily well in that particular segment. Once we expand beyond that segment, we see a little bit more volatility and unpredictability in how well that UTR rating performs. So it's important to know that these are really, when we think about the ratings like a tool, these are two different tools. The NTRP is a tool designed to generally group players for adult league play, whereas UTR is a rating used for draw placement and, and also it's actually commonly used for recruiting to help recruiters understand a particular level of a player. It's very dynamic because the interest in these high performance, again, at young players, is of dynamic interest. These coaches are looking at it frequently and things like that. So you see, it isn't that one's better than the other. And actually, in our high-level analysis of both, they perform almost exactly the same when we looked at predictability as a whole. It's just that they're designed for different segments to do different things. And that's where we see the difference. ITF World Tennis Number, also not a competitor. ITF is a partner of USTA as the International Tennis Federation. And they are working to develop a World Tennis Number that serves all federations. There's over 120 federations that have signed a data-share agreement with the ITF and are working to get their data over to ITF as we speak. And that algorithm is actually quite different than the NTRP and the UTR. And it's designed with all player segments in mind, of all ages, all abilities. And really, how the USTA will interact with this will be determined over time. We're working closely with them to develop it. We're a member of the Slam Nation Steering Committee, where we meet regularly with the ITF and help them test and build the World Tennis Number. And how we will use it again for USTA programmings and release it in the US will be determined as we move forward. And really get a look at this rating is still quite a ways out. It's a big, complex project, as you can imagine. Thanks, Alicia. Top three myths. All of my matches should be competitive. We talked about this before, but just to touch on it again, the ratings, the rating levels offer a range of skill. And so some of those matches will be competitive, and some of them may be a little bit more what we call compatible. My win-loss record is factored into my rating. I intentionally put this one on here twice because we hear it quite a bit. The algorithm does not look at win-loss record when it calculates a rating. The reason why, and I'll talk about that just to make it extra clear why. If we think about the range of a rating, we'll go back to that, that slide mentally of the 3.5 player. If I'm a 3.01 and I'm always playing players at the other end of the scale, there are still 3.5s, maybe they're 3.47, 3.36, 3.49, and I'm losing every match, I'm actually doing exactly what my rating suggests I should be doing. I'm losing because I'm playing players that are higher on that 3.5 scale than I am. So it doesn't mean that I'm at the wrong level. It doesn't mean that I should be dropped down. It just means that I happen to be playing opponents that are much higher rated. And the flip side of that, for that 3.5 player who's on the cusp and looking to move to 4.0, who says, gosh, I've won every single match. Why am I not a 4.0? If that's the case, we look and we see, well, you're playing players that are very low in the 3.5 range, and thus, you're not generating the dynamics that bump you into the 4.0 range. Those dynamics are reflecting the fact that you played a very low 3.0 player, 3.5 player, close to the 3.0 range. And so it is keeping you at that 3.5 level. So that just gives a little bit more detail about the why don't I move up and why that win-loss isn't, isn't included. It's purely based on relativity, which is a core algorithmic principle for a lot of these tennis algorithms. Managing up, playing up, or giving games to my opponents are good ways to manage my rating level. We've talked a little bit about this. This one is close to my heart for a few reasons. One, I hear a lot from players who want their rating to go up and so play up and don't have great playing experiences and are frustrated because they're not having great play experiences and their rating still isn't going up. Well, they aren't having great play experiences because they're out of level. It's important to follow that ladder and really stay where you're performing, where you're having your most challenging matches and able to give your best and feel satisfied with the match and let the, let the algorithm move you up naturally as your skills progress. The other thing about giving games, and I talked about this before, is that this, this is a game in itself. While you're figuring out how to, which, how many sets to lose and which ones to lose and where to hit the ball and, and all these things, that's a game, but it's not tennis. And it's not bringing games played in good faith integrity to the sport. So really important to, to keep in mind that we all play to the best of our ability and give every match our best, and that's the best way to have a good tennis match. Thanks, Alicia. Do you want to advance the slide? Okay, so the questions that were submitted with the registrations were phenomenal. And what I did was I went through them. Thank you so much for taking the time to type them in. I'm going to do what I call a speed round because there's two pages of these. So I'm going to go quickly through them. I pulled out anything that wasn't personal, wasn't a duplicate, and that I felt was really helpful to inform the group. So apologies in advance because I'm going to move fast. I'm aware of time. But I did want to answer as many questions as possible because I really like being able to get these answers out there. Will 2020 matches be included in the 2021 calculation? Yes. When we run year-end ratings for 2021, we will include two years of match data. So 2020 matches that were played and included leagues and tournaments will be included in the 2021 calculations. Will each year count as an individual sit-out year? Yes. So the sit-out years are calendar years. So if you have not played, your 2020 year will be a sit-out year and your 2021 will be a sit-out year. Can we have mid-year ratings? I like this question. I think this is a question about helping establish self-rated players in the middle of the year to help them understand how they're tracking and better stabilize some of that movement that happens around the appealed and self-rated players. Again, looking at the data, it's something we're trying to figure out how to do without being disruptive to the league. Remember that what is mid, you know, between seasons for you is in the middle of someone else's season. When we think nationally, someone is always in the middle of their season. So we don't really have a clean break where it's an obvious time for us to release mid-year ratings where we wouldn't disrupt a variety of active leagues. So that really remains one of the bigger questions. Definitely something that we're looking at to figure out how we could do either half-year or quarterly, something like that, to help players with their ratings as we move through the year. How will USTA compete with UTR? I included this intentionally because I thought it was a great question. USTA does not intend to compete with UTR. We definitely service different segments. And where we service the same segment, it's kind of like Coke and Pepsi. Which do you like? Try them both. Maybe you, maybe you don't have a preference and maybe you do. And as a consumer, as a tennis player, go where you're getting the most enjoyment out of your play. Can UTR be added as a self-rate criteria? That's a great question. Until there's more consistency in how their adult ratings are performing, we're not going to add that to our self-rate criteria. It's something we continue to watch. How long does it take to receive a mixed-exclusive M-rating? So same as the others, it takes three matches, and these are produced at year-end at the same time that the C ratings and the T ratings are produced. We run all the algorithms at the same time. And again, as long as you've had three matches in a calendar year, or in this case, two calendar years, you'll receive that M-rating. How do appeals work for 65-plus? So I'm going to walk through the four age-related appeals here. If you're a player and you are over 60, so you're 60 years old, and you have had three years of play at the same level and suddenly receive a rating that is a level higher, you have access to an appeal as long as those three previous years did not include any appeals. So really important for that 60, 60-plus player, there are no appeals and you have three years of stable history at a lower level. And you're within a particular range to allow you access to the appeal. So it sounds a little complicated. Happy to talk through it more if that's still a question. The 65-plus, you don't need the three consistent years. You do need previous year without benefit of appeal and again, have to be within a particular range in order to access that appeal down. How does a rating get increased? A rating will move up for a player that is consistently exhibiting skills as evidenced by their dynamic ratings at a higher level. So while you may be performing well at your level, if those dynamics aren't quite in that next level, the algorithm will not move you up. If you, even if you are in a particular level and you're doing really well and you're playing against equally highly-rated players in your band, you may get moved up. So it really doesn't have to necessarily do with the level at which you're playing. It's how you're performing and those dynamics that are being generated based on your performance. How is the USTA combating self-rate cheating? I appreciate this question. We really do the best that we can, thinking in terms of, we have a form. We ask people to have integrity. We ask them to say, yes, I'm being honest. Yes, it's me filling out this form. That's what we can do with a computer. If people aren't being honest, we do have a grievance process. So if there's a way to put the players, you know, to submit a grievance and say, can you help research this player and see if there was falsification of information? Each section has a process that enables that to take place for players. If there are other ideas around self-rate, please submit them. You know, we are always looking at regulations here, like, for example, a recent change was that self-rated players need to play a few more matches than other players in order to advance to championships. This gives us a little more time to see how that self-rated player is performing and do they belong at the level at which they're playing? So things like that are some of the solutions we've looked at outside of, you know, not having a way to, to know if someone's being honest or not. As long as they're saying they are and there's no information in our USTA systems, there really is no way for us to know. So, so eyes on the ground. Basically, if you see it and you're not sure, raise the, raise the question about a grievance with your coordinator or your section. Will any adjustments be considered in 2021 due to lack of play in 2020? Wasn't exactly sure what this question was asking, but I will tell you this. Because we didn't publish ratings at the end of 2020, we have a special appeal consideration for players who believe that had they received a rating at the end of 2020, it would have put them at a different level, either higher or lower. If you believe that the play you had in 2020 would have put you at a different level, should ratings have been run, you may submit an appeal to your section. The section will research your play history. And if you are eligible based on your 2020 activity, we at National can review that and process the appeal. It's a very unique, very one-time process. It is not subjective. It's based solely on your dynamics and your activity in 2020. So if you think you're eligible, submit a request and we'll happy to take a look for you. And if you meet the criteria, happy to adjust your rating. You'll receive an A, and that will be the rating you have in place until we publish year-end in 2021. Are there any special considerations for self-rated players that started in 2020? I think this is referring to DQs and strikes. They are subject to DQs and strikes, just like everybody else. And because it's two years of play, we are looking at a two-year window for those DQs and strikes. Would additional levels be considered to expand the offering of the NTRP level? So for example, have we thought about 1.0, 1.5, 3.25? This goes back to what I was saying before about, there's a couple of things here. One is, is managing the number of levels. The other thing is, we don't have so many what we would call a 1.0 player, which is a, which is a lower-level player. I think this question kind of means, do we spread them out a little bit so we get more competitiveness and less compatibility within those levels? I think that's what this question is trying to say. And really, the way we've structured it with the 2.5, 3.0, 3.5, some cases 2.0 leagues, some cases 5.0, 5.5, is really what supports what our infrastructure and what our populations and what our administrative structure will allow us to support. I love this question. I think we're really doing the most we can right now with how things are put together. Can 55 and 65 and over leagues be added into dynamics? This is interesting. This would enable DQs for these leagues. I did take note of this question. We're going to take it back to the group and kind of revisit why this hasn't been the case. There, maybe, but we're looking at it. I appreciate the question. Alicia, can you advance the slide? Alicia, can you advance the slide? Almost there. Why do some national championship players move up and some stay at the same level? This ties back into the relativity piece. It really depends on who they played at Nationals, what the dynamics of their opponents were, how they performed. Again, the algorithm doesn't have rules about, oh, you played at Nationals, you're moving up, or, oh, you played at Nationals and you won, you're moving up. The algorithm is blind to all of that, and it really looks at that relative dynamic result of play and participation. So for players that were maybe closer to the next level or had bigger wins, they will move up, and players that simply didn't have the same level of performance won't move up. What is the start rating for self-rated players? So we talked about this. That's that zero rating until we start to learn about you through your play. Are 0-0 results excluded from the calculation? They are not. We include every match that is in an included league. And, you know, there's nothing to say that a 0-0 should be thrown out. We've done research on this. We've analyzed it, we've looked at it, and it, the data did not suggest that this helped the ratings or was beneficial. So we do not exclude anything. Just so you know, we are looking at a provision in the algorithm that would exclude 0-0 results for players that are, what I will say, very far apart. So using a very extreme example, if a 4.0 were to play 5.0, those are very far apart. If there were a 0-0 result, we may start to exclude some of those results. And that's what I'll tell you there as far as that research goes. But that's down the line and it's in research at this time. How do NTRP and UTR line up? And why doesn't USTA use UTR? I did talk about this a little bit. They're different systems. They're very different scales. They're different algorithms with different principles, and they serve different purposes in different constituencies. So just because they're both tennis rating systems doesn't mean they have very organic, very organic overlap. And, and what we're seeing is, they don't when we look at them side by side. How can we improve geographical impact? This is also something we're working on with the algorithm. I think it probably looks a lot bigger from the ground level than what we see in the analysis. But we are always looking at where we see players that don't have as much cross-play in some areas of the country as other areas and looking at making modifications to the algorithm to help proliferate that cross-play. We would rely on the algorithm to do that, and it's a little bit complex. So that's something that's in the works. How can a mistake in NTRP be corrected? If this is a match result that was entered incorrectly or something that was not the way it was supposed to be in the system, you can, you can change the, you can change the score and let us know it was changed. If there's a question about a mistake, submit it. We'll take a look and see what's going on. The algorithm doesn't, it, we don't have mistakes in the algorithm, but sometimes results can be put in that can affect a player's rating in a way that, once those results are corrected, the algorithm handles the rating and the player feels like that, that score change or that result change did have the effect that we wanted it to have. So if you think there's an error in your results, let's take a look. That's really the extent of NTRP. But if you have an inquiry, go ahead and submit it to your section and we'll take a look. Timing of play and inclusion with ratings. I wanted to address this one. There were a lot of questions about, is my spring league included? What about my summer leagues? Why only fall leagues? Why not winter leagues? This all has to do with how your section has set up your league, the timing of it. And they can set it up in a way that includes it or doesn't. Those are all section questions. It, it's really up to them and how they set it up in Tennis Link. So wish I could answer more there. It's absolutely different across the country. Can we have a singles rating and a doubles rating? I like this question. It's something we've looked at. It would be a huge change for us algorithmically, infrastructure-wise, and for our program. We'd also have to change all of our rules and regulations because where you can play as a singles player and where you can play as a doubles player, based on the rules we have today, would not be the same. So that certainly complicates team structure, registration regulations, all of that. You can imagine the work that would go into that. Again, a question we revisit quite frequently despite the complexity of it. Age at which I can retain my rating? So we talked about that, three years for 60 and under, two years for 60 and over. Why don't we have in-person rating clinics? They are more subjective than, than we'd want to admit. You know, what we found when we were doing the in-person rating clinics was that there was a fair amount of, oh, well, what level do you want to be? Oh, that's where your friends are, go ahead, or, or things like that. So we, we don't have the ability to ensure that the people providing the ratings clinics are going to do it based on the, the level descriptions. And so we, we've avoided those and we've simplified it, and we've reduced the cost and increased the efficiency by creating that form. How does line position impact NTRP? It does not. Line position has no impact on NTRP. Really important question, and I love that. How is age factored in? The algorithm itself does not look at age. What we manage, how we manage the complexity of age and the change of skill around ages with those various regulations that you heard me talk about, now we're up to four, which is quite a bit of variability in the regulations as players age. What we're looking to do is fine-tune those regulations based on data. Data being what are dynamic ratings of those players in those age groups tell us? And what does science tell us about skill and flexibility degradation over time? So lots of research. That's an ongoing project, and I think that we all can expect more changes to come in that arena around how we're handling appeals for those age players. Do ratings include other inputs or consider number of players at a level? I get this question actually a fair amount. When year-end ratings come out, is there any review process that moves players to other levels to keep the distribution even? That's what this question means, or that's how I read it, and that's the question that I get. The answer to that is no. Players are placed at the level where the algorithm places them. There is no committee, no manual review to put players at different levels based on distribution. That's all algorithm work, and we let them land where they land. We do have a nearly perfect bell curve of NTRP, play, woo! NTRP players? That's what I get for doing a speed round, where the peak is at 3.5, and, and probably that's not a surprise to anyone who's played league. Most of our players are right around 3.5. And I can't believe I got all the way through it. We're almost at time. Marilyn, Michael, Liz, do you guys want me to try to tackle some of the Q&amp;A? Can you feed me some of them? What do we want to do here?
Yeah, why don't we do this, Heather? If we can, if we can spend another couple of minutes. I, I would like for you to do just a couple more of these. So, are sections winning NTRP national championships at the same quote "rate" across all ratings? The system should allow all sections to randomly win the same number of NCs. Do you want to touch that topic?
I think this is a question about the geographic. So like, can a player from northern stand up against a player from southern? Is that essentially?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. The answer is yes. I mean, that's how we would see it, is that, but, but here's something that's really important to think about. Here's where, this is not an NTRP thing. This is a population thing. If we think about math, we think about averages. If you're in an area like, and I'm gonna pick on specific areas, you're in an area like Atlanta, which is a very year-round, very heavily populated tennis area, your ability as a captain to put together teams with players that have a higher in-level NTRP average, that means for a 3.5 team, maybe your team average is 3.47 because you've got a much larger, more condensed player pool to pick from, is very different than if you're in a remote part of the country where players are more spread out. It's hard to get players even to, even to a match necessarily because they have to drive far to get there. You don't have the same opportunity as a captain to cherry pick and say, I want my team average to be 3.47. What you're working on is just getting your, your team and getting your players through. So it isn't about the NTRP being inequitable. It's really more to do with the geographical setting of that, of that location. I hope that helped.
Yeah, thanks, Heather. I want to do, let's, let's do one more. This one's a, um, a little bit longer because it's kind of a multi-parter. But asking, is the, is the, I mean, I'm gonna hit you with a bunch of these. Let's see if you can get them rapid speed, right? All right, is the daily dynamic rating averaged over the last few matches? Do older matches get less weight than recent matches? So getting into a little bit more depth on that, you know, you can, you can take that, what you want. Is the DQ level dependent on NTRP level? So just some questions coming in that are a little bit more, a little bit more in the weeds.
Yes, so I like that question. What I can tell you from a transparency standpoint is that we're in a little bit of muddy water. So it may feel like my answer is non-material. That's not intentional. I'm just walking that line again of, of proprietary nature. So the dynamics do at a certain point begin to average. That is all I can say. The DQ levels are based on a level, the level at which a player is self-rated and the level at which they're playing. And I'll go a little bit further into that. If I'm a 3.5 self-rated player and I'm playing 3.5 and I'm generating strikes in the 4.0 range, then I will be DQed to the 4.0 range. However, if I am a 3.5 self-rated player and I am only playing on a 4.0 team and I'm generating strikes at the 4.0 range, I will be promoted and moved up. And those are handled administratively a little bit differently. But it looks, the system looks at what is your self-rate? And are you generating dynamics out of level for that self-rate? And how the rules apply to that has to do with, on which, which teams and what level those teams are where you're registered.
Thanks, Heather. I'm gonna, let's pick out just a couple more here. This one is more of the, in the philosophical vein here. There seems to be a lot of concern with potentially disrupting leagues with mid-year ratings. If players are in the wrong spots, aren't they really disrupting the league play? Why give them a quote "free" year to play at an incorrect level?
Yeah, that's a really good, yeah, I think that's a really good question. I think my question would then be, how do we, where do we draw the line between administratively moving those players around and good faith? Right? And how far out of level do we want players to be? I mean, that's an easy question to ask. But if we have a 3.0 player that's 3.01, are they technically out of level? Do we kick them out of their league mid-season? How do we handle that, that reconstruction of teams? And, you know, we used to DQ computer-rated players, and we got away from it for a lot of reasons. I think it's a fair question. Your point about disruption is, is well-made. I think for me, I'm not saying we never would. The question remains around, what does that administrative management look like? I, I am, people who know me all know I'm very heartstring-centric, and the idea of disrupting the teams like that is, is challenging. I hear your point about if they're out of level, they are disrupting play in a different way. And I think, I think you ask a great question, and it's one we should, we should be asking ourselves on a regular basis. So that, that's gonna go in the book.[1690.29]